Third to order, it's a regular meeting. First order of business is we have a full house of commissioners. The minutes are going to be revised and resubmitted for next time. If anybody has a comment that they want to make sure gets corrected, you're welcome to make it. Mike, did you say yet?
Well, I, a point of order, we, according to the minutes, and I didn't go back to the video to actually check, but, application eighteen sixty-two, in the minutes, we said we were going to table it to twelve seventeen, but it's on tonight's agenda.
Yeah, it's still on your agenda because it's a live application, but they will not be here tonight, it's been tabled.
Okay.
There's no action requests of the commission on that item.
We've had that happen.
Yeah, it's just, it's mainly so that you still have an application that's pending until it's voted on or removed, withdrawn, it stays on your agenda.
Gotcha.
But no actions.
That's old business.
Yeah, no actions requested of the commission on that item tonight.
Okay, any other, so let's move on to public hearings. Application eighteen fifty-nine, Mr. Secretary.
Application eighteen fifty-nine of Joel D. Weissman and Gerald Rosman, Agents two forty-one to two forty-five, Hot Meadows Street LLC, owner for zone change from I two to B three, and a property located at two forty-one to two forty-five, Hot Meadows Street, assessors map F sixteen, block one one six, block zero zero three B.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, good evening, my name is Richard Meehan, I am Principal and President of Meehan and Gooden Engineers Surveyors in Manchester, Connecticut, three eighty-seven North Main Street, and as first order of business, I'm going to pass over to you. You have to David. Scaring that sign has been up for actually seventeen days. I'm here representing RWR and Joel Weissman, who is in the audience, and they, they own the, he owns the Farmington Valley Racquet Club, I'm sure you've seen it, it's down on, on Hot Meadows Street, it's a four point nine one acre parcel, is the entire parcel, and the Racquet Club is located on a four point four acre parcel, and what we're really focusing on now is the, less than, the point four seven, just under half an acre office building that's attached to the, attached to the property. It was the subject of a subdivision application here, I think some three or four years ago, that we prepared, and you may or may not be, may be familiar with it from having been participated in that. What happened about four years ago was that Joel's major tenant, he has a, has an office building, the major tenant left, they needed some more space, and so they left him, and he's now down to seventy-six point seven six vacancy point, there's, there's quite a bit of vacancy in it, and he's gone out and tried to find tenants that were going to, that could come take, take the space, and he's been, quite frankly, unsuccessful at it, and the restraint that we, he's noticed, and his real estate agent has noticed, and his appraiser has noticed, is that the uses that are permitted in the I two zone, and it's, I'm sure you're familiar with the I two zone, like a sale of underground storage and fuel and building materials and grain sales, and utility garages and storage yards just do not fit a half acre office building, and the thought is, a B three use would be far more, a B three zone would be, give him and his, his partners the flexibility to, to invite other potential tenants in. This is exacerbate, not exacerbate, wrong word, let me take that back, this has been actually signaled by the, by the issuance of a B three, B three zone on the corner of, of, right down the street, two properties removed, to another, another property there. On Latterman Lane, on Latterman Lane and Hot Meadows, thank you very much, and this, I don't know if you've ever been in the building, the building is set up so it is more appropriate for almost single tenant, we're looking for a tailor, a, a, a physical therapy therapist, a medical arts, and things of that nature, which by the way, would fit perfectly into the property, but they're not, they don't fit into the current zone, and so here we are, seeking a, a change of zone. We've been to the planning commission, and they approved it, as you see, you probably have a letter to that effect, and we are here, hat in hand, seeking your approval. And then, and Joel is here to answer any questions, I can answer any questions, I know, I know technically about the property, Joel knows more about the history of the property, although, I think we did our first survey of the property back in nineteen seventy-eight, but I, I inherited the firm that did the first survey of the Farmington Valley, Valley Racquet Club, it's been, been a business for almost, almost fifty years, and it's an institution, and it looks, it seeks to continue, but we need to do something with the office building, and so, here we are. Oh, the, the zone change would apply to the entire four point nine one acres, we'd, rather than, we, we feel kind of isolated, right now, he feels isolated as an I three, if you look at your exhibit eleven, you'll see that, we're the only I three in the middle of, you know, this whole sea of other retail and other personal uses and that, and residential uses, the I three just doesn't fit, you don't have room for grain storage on the property.
Okay. Commissioners have questions, Bruce?
What kind of businesses do you think might be interested if there's a zone change?
Boy, medical, the biggest one is medical arts, that seems to be the, and personal services, or, physical therapist, just uses that are, that are more appropriate to the residential uses that are going on up and down, up in Simsbury, really. The one we really focus on is medical arts, we'd like, we'd like to, when I say medical arts, that, that, that's the whole gamut of, you know, the, the psychologist and that sort of business, personal offices, as opposed to, what there was there was one firm that took up seventy percent, eighty, almost eighty percent of the space, they, they outgrew the space, God bless them.
What was that firm, what did they do?
Vesta, Vesta Realty, they, they did, they, they bought properties and we had.
They asked you to move through the power force.
I wish we had another one of those, we don't.
One of mine.
We don't.
Do the people have questions? Looking for the layout, where the office buildings is? Is it on the north side of the tennis court?
It's on the north side, yes, it's sort of like tucked in, I mean, you see the tennis, the tennis building, you know, and then at the end of the parking lot, it's sort of like tucked in, although, there's no trees in front of it, it's, it's open, but it actually fits in, there's nothing garish about this property, it's just. There was, I was here last month, and there was a picture of, of zoning, of zoning, of zoning, and show the, where the building is, at A right, at the FPL.
If you go to your packets on exhibit eight.
Yeah.
The small building, which is over to the right-hand corner, which is the northeastern corner of the property, that's the little professional office building, and obviously the tennis court's behind it, but there's zone change applied to that entire part, both parcels.
Used to be some sales reps in there, other things. Yeah, we have that, there were some sales reps or something in there?
Yeah, there was a computer company in there at one point.
Mr. Chairman, if you, if you go to exhibit two in your packet, the applicant prepared a pretty extensive letter, kind of outlining what they've tried, also the fact that this, this major tenant left actually in August of two thousand and thirteen, so this space has been, Joel, correct me if I'm wrong, vacant since two thousand and thirteen?
Yes.
So, that's why, when they approached staff, they wanted to do medical office or retail, something else, what I explained to them, you have one of two options, either you'd have to change the zoning designation for the property, or change the regulations, the preferred option was the possible zone change application, rather than having a, a sweeping effect throughout the town on introducing uses that may not be compatible to other I two uses, as Mr. Meehan did an excellent job discussing what's allowed in that zoning district. The only other thing is exhibit sixteen, I had a quick staff report to you, just remind you that it is a sta, it is a zone change, it's a legislative action by the commission, if you were to approve the change, staff reminds, you just need to set an effective date for this, I have an effective date suggested as Thursday, December twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, it'll get you out of the appeal period, and we're available if you have any questions.
Now, the tennis facility, that would then be on a B three?
Mm-hmm.
That's allowed?
Which would be conforming to the B, B three zone regs, zoning regulations, too.
So that can be either I one or?
Did, sorry.
So tennis court can be in either zone?
Recreational, a private recreational use could be allowed either in industrial or business.
I should have looked that up, thank you.
We looked it up for you years ago.
And I didn't read that either, sorry. Mike, you got any comments, or?
This seems pretty straightforward to me. I got another thing.
Joe, do you have any?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay, anybody from the?
Who said he did?
No, sorry.
Could you tell me what the back of the property, the western boundary abuts the Connecticut, the right-of-way and the rails to trails and that sort of thing, what's back there, is there any fencing? The visual between this property and the residential occupied houses that are on the other side of the railway?
I do not believe there was, or I don't, don't think there ever was, there's no fence, no fence between, between you and the right-of-way for the?
I'm trying to get a picture of what it looks like between you and the houses. Between your property and the houses, on the other side of the rails to trails, is there any fencing that you own?
I'm fencing, but there's a lot of woods.
Okay.
A lot of woods.
Thank you.
I could actually tell you a story, when we came in for zoning on that office, on that tennis club, there was somebody on that next street that came in to object, because he claimed that he would be able to hear the tennis balls bouncing on the court in the tennis club, okay? That's a true story.
Probably a member now.
Thank you.
That was some time ago.
Yeah, it was, forty-seven years ago.
Okay. Dana? Anybody in the public want to speak to this application?
Mr. Chairman, I make most likely close the public hearing on application eighteen fifty-nine.
Second?
Second.
Second by Jackie, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Application's, public hearing is closed, six nothing. Okay, another application, public hearing.
We're not done.
You want, you might want to stay here, because we're going to act on that later in the meeting.
I'm sorry, what?
We're going to be acting on that later in the meeting, so you might want to stay.
Oh, okay.
Please let me know, because you don't want me to stay, okay?
Big suspense.
Yes.
Okay, application eighteen sixty-one.
Yes, application eighteen sixty-one of Scott Brace, PDS Engineering and Construction Agent, Dyno Nobel Inc., owner for special exception, presents to Article seven, section N dot seven dot D of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations for the filling and grading and the floodplain of the property located at six forty, Hot Meadows Street, assessors map G eleven, block one thirty-two, lock zero five two, zone I two.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Scott Brace, I'm with PDS Engineering and Construction, and I'm representing Dyno Nobel and Simon Vicford for the loading dock expansion project, and we're here seeking approval of a special exception because of the project's proximity to the floodplain. Just a little bit about the project, a small project we have is a area outlined in yellow is the existing loading dock, outlined in green is the proposed expansion, other work takes place pretty much just around the proximity of the, the actual building. The area to the rear of the property is a large berm, on the east side is a large berm, the border is that, and the river's on the, there's a field and then the river on the other side of that property. With that, we don't feel that there's any real impact to the floodplain that's on the other side of that large berm, and we reviewed the staff's report, and feel that, that we agree with the comments, and that we're seeking approval of this application tonight. Thank you, any questions?
Questions, Bruce?
And the purpose of the enlargement was, did you, I didn't hear you say what?
In larger equipment to get inside, basically need one larger door, it expands it maybe ten foot one direction and fifteen foot in the other, but allows for a larger overhead door than what's currently there now.
What goes in and out of there, is that finished product going out to, on the road?
That's, actually, if I can defer that to Ed, who actually works there.
Yeah, what they make in that industry, friends, the joints, what we're doing is, we've got a contract to put out, it's like twenty-one foot boxes, so the door's got to be twenty-two feet, we have to get a special forklift, because they have to go down in there, we can't get a tractor trailer in, and it'll bring in the product up to the road, it, it's going to be something for the US government, I can't say what it is, but it, it goes, you know, with the government, and it, we'll be doing X amount of them, and there's just no way to get them out of the building, everything is fabricated right on our site, and then our truckers will, will, will move it appropriately to the tractor trailer for its proper shipping destination.
Is that an existing product, or that sounds, sounds like something new?
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's a new product?
It's, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Listen, put it this way, it's a larger product, it's much, much larger, and they just can't get it through the door.
And I don't want to carry it.
Fifty years ago, I worked there.
Ed Vernon, Keith Gelshauser's my boss.
Some of them are still similar to what they were when I was there, they just changed a lot, yeah.
Dana?
Do you have any questions?
No, my, my comment is, if staff says that this will not have an adverse impact, it's important.
We're here to order to keep doing business, all in favor?
Yeah.
Did this go to conservation?
This was not, it's not within a hundred feet of map weapons, so therefore, it's not subject to the Conservation Commission, strictly creating in within the approved floodplain. The only other thing is that Scott kind of indicated, so there's a berm, it's kind of to the southeast of where this proposed, I have it attached to my staff report, you can see the, on the topo map, that berm's about ten feet above the base flood elevation, so the existing berm actually presents more restriction to the floodplain than this filling and grading activity will pose, so that's why staff recommends approval of this.
Does anyone in the public care to speak to this application? Hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing on application eighteen sixty-one.
Second.
Second by Bruce, any further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed, six nothing. Okay, we've got application eighteen sixty-three.
Application eighteen sixty-three of Brennan White Castle Blues Architects Agent, Town of Simsbury owner, for special exception pursuant to Article seven, section A dot four, for alterations and additions to Henry James Memorial School, and a property located at one fifty-five Hot Firetown Road, being located on the west side of Firetown Road between Simsbrough Road and Branch Brook Drive, the zone R fifteen.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good record, my name is Adam Kessler, I'm engineer of the town, stepping in for Board of Ed tonight, Burke is tied up at tri-board as well as design, or public building, so, got a few things going on tonight. We have Castle Blues here to give a quick introduction to the project, seeing it's the first public hearing tonight, and we just received some revised plans in response to our initial comments today, and we're asking that this gets continued to, meeting on the seventeenth, so that we have adequate time to go through some of the comments, they're all addressable, and I think there's a solution to each one, we just need to work through some of the stuff, WPCA also needs to take a look at the plans as well, so that's the only real big item that, that we have tonight, but while we have, you might as well go through the project for a bit.
Okay.
Any questions for Board of Ed, I don't think I can answer, but engineering, I got that covered.
Thank you.
So I'll turn it over to Castle Blues, and take a seat.
Thank you, good evening, my name is Brennan White, that's on the project, architect. Reworked this, it wasn't, all the stuff wasn't here last time for the conservation, but, no, that's, that's fine, I think we can. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
I introduce myself, this is Amy Morrow, she's an architect on the project as well, so she'll help out with any, answering building related questions that you might have. Just overall, it's an exciting project, our project civil engineer is BSC Group, and our construction manager for the project is Don's Construction, who's see the construction through the location, who also be doing construction administration, so we'll be attaching this project all the way through, so, and we're all, we're all just a large group projects. This project involves additions and alterations to the existing school, Amy can talk about, a little bit about the interior, I'll go over kind of a overview of the project, discuss a little bit about the construction staging as well, and then I'll show you some of the images that we have for the project, some elevations and perspective views, and as Adam mentioned, we did respond today to staff comments, they were very thorough, we're in agreement with all of the comments, I think we can resolve them, a lot of the questions and responses, we've already, like Adam said, provided a set of plans, which we've addressed, addressed the comments, and we're looking forward to, you know, resolving everything, which I think is fairly easy to do. So as far as the project goes, the, involves additions, addition to the north, fifty-eight hundred square foot media center addition, which forms a small courtyard as well, which I'll talk about later on, and to the south, a eighty-six hundred square foot auditorium addition, which is right here, the site improvements include some renovation of accessible parking spaces, there's three to the south which exist today, adjacent to the continuing education entrance, those will be renovated for slope, for compliance with accessibility requirements, signage, slope adjustment, new pavement, and if anyone's ever been out to the, the school today, they know that parking in the back, there's no way to get to the, get to the front, so we're incorporating, associated with these accessible spaces, and continuing that walkway around the south end of the school, so it's a much needed improvement, that actually picks up egress points out of the south addition, so there'll be a circulation pattern, path all the way around the south end, connecting to the existing walkways in front of the school. To the east, the main entrance currently doesn't have any compliant or, doesn't have any accessible parking, so we're looking to get rid of, take out the parallel spaces, there's eleven spaces along that drop-off that are on the left-hand side, and actually move them off the drive and into an angled parking arrangement, and add another twelve spaces, so we'll be picking up twenty-three, twenty-three spaces overall, sorry, picking up twelve spaces, be, be a total of twenty-three spaces out in front. And to the north, simply, there's, to connect to the addition, an existing point of egress, providing an accessible route all the way around, connecting to existing sidewalk to the north side of the building. Other improvements required for this project are drainage improvements to the south, so the, the surface of the, the addition is picked up, we're infiltrating storm water, so roof water would be infiltrated underground in that location, as well as the addition, media center addition, we'll also have underground infiltration system right here, any overflow would go into the system, which currently runs actually to the west, to the back of the property, so any, any overflow of that underground drainage, underground infiltration would end up connecting to that system. Some of the, some of the drainage piping would be reworked to kind of jog through the courtyard, also pick up some underdrainage that we have underneath, our porous pavement in the courtyard, so very conducive to infiltration, very well drained soils out there on site, as discussed last time with the Conservation Commission. Our plantings around the site, a variety of native and adaptive species, the, some larger shade trees, which I, I'll show you some photographs of, beach to the north, kind of a specimen tree, as it grows, get a lot of space to, to grow and kind of create a feature tree out to the north, which can be viewed through the media center windows. The east, because this parking takes out some trees, we're going to incorporate some culminatory areas to kind of highlight the main entrance. To the south, some larger shade trees, as well as some smaller flowering trees, kind of bring down the scale of that, that structure.
Is that structure two-story? Each of you?
Or one-story? So as far as the zoning regulations go, this project is in full compliance, the, the building heights are in full compliance, the auditorium addition is thirty-two, thirty-two feet, and the media center addition is twenty-one foot six, setbacks, as you can see, to the north are further back than what exists today, approximately three hundred thirty feet to the corner of the addition, to the north property line, the south addition is approximately one hundred and fifty-five feet away from the, the south property line, and about seventy-seven feet from the property line, the front yard property line, going from Firetown Road. Obviously, we've split the site kind of in two, so construction becomes a challenge, but I think it's handled well, in terms of formulating this, this plan, we've discussed with the administration, as well as the police department and the fire department, these plans, and I think everyone's in agreement that it's a good system, we seek to separate any school activities completely from construction activities, so, to the north, there'll be a large staging area, will be completely fenced with a scrim around it, so it'll be a six-foot high fence with a human scrim. It'll be completely fenced with a scrim around it, so it'll be a six-foot-high fence with a human scrim, so blocking views into that construction area, utilizing a large, flat, open area up on the, to the north. So there'll be contracted parking within that area, storage and field offices. These indicate crane paths for erecting the steel. There'll be a single point of entrance from this, this larger construction area, and that would be essentially a checkpoint where any of the contractors will be, any of the contractors on this project will have background checks, and they will have credentials, ID badges, so they'd be, at a checkpoint, they could access some of the renovations that are occurring throughout the school. To the south, also, it would have a fenced area to construct the, the southern addition. Each of these would have anti-tracking pads to prevent, you know, migration of soils out into the road. And this main area where, which would see most of the traffic in and out, would have paved surface, so curb paved surface, up to the, the existing fence, which would, would then transition to a crushstone material. Soil stockpile will be right here, which also would, would offer an additional buffer to the north coming neighbors. It would be temporarily seeded. It's silt fence and hay bales around that, prevent any migration of soils. But each of these areas would have silt fence around. As far as the security in this area, there will be a security camera, as well as some, some security lighting. The duration of the project, which we should touch on, is the spring of 2019, so this is coming spring until the fall, the fall of 2020.
You're stripping in that area, you're going to strip the topsoil in the whole area and gravel the whole?
Topsoil will be stripped down to subgrade, which is a free-draining sandy subgrade soil. We had also mentioned in our comments or response to the town is that there will be a portion of money set aside, allowance for processed aggregate, to be able to put down as needed throughout this area. So this area will be stripped of topsoil. This area will be stripped of topsoil. Stockpile right here, temporarily seeded, so as I mentioned, it's going to be a large soil stockpile, but it, it actually works, it's beneficial because it creates additional buffer to the north. Obviously, there, there are some trees in the, in the south portion of the construction area that will be fenced around to remain. So compaction is, is a key thing as well. We do have some subsurface areas, as I mentioned, infiltration basins, chambers that, that, you know, we don't want to over-compact this. Throughout, obviously, a lot of heavy vehicles driving around. After construction is complete, loosening the soil, bringing it back to topsoil, and then spreading it evenly and properly graved to, to provide proper positive drainage. So we want to pay specific attention to over-compaction and being able to loosen that soil after, you know, as, as they're on their way out the door, especially in those areas of infiltration, including the courtyard, as I mentioned. We already have porous pavement.
That's a big pile of dirt that's sitting on a hill.
It's on the top, it would be essentially the top.
And you're going to keep all that there in the spring?
It would, it would be there until they're ready to.
No, I meant with rain and.
It, it would have hay bales and silt fence around, so it's a double, double protection around that. And it will be temporarily seeded, so it will be stabilized.
Oh, it would be seeded.
It would, it would be seeded.
And construction would just be during the week at certain hours, or?
It, it may also be overtime hours, depending on the schedule.
Weekends?
Possibly weekend. As, as needed.
Now, so you're going to do the two building areas, but what about, when, when will you strip the, the parking lots space?
This right here?
Yeah, yeah.
That would be only done during summertime?
Yeah, so you're going to add that to the pile?
This, this area would essentially, if any, any excess topsoil that the project does not need, would be hauled off-site. So it wouldn't be excess material. All that material would be screened, so any excess material, if, if they choose to haul more off, then they'll just have to bring more on later on, so. That was the, the way Downs felt would be the most logical procedure to pilot a new location and secure it with the silt fence and the hay bales. But this, in order to not impact any of the school, you know, daily activities, this, this would not be done during.
So you can do that in the summer of 2019?
Be done in the summer. There's also another utility connection that we have to make. There's a gas line that comes in right here. So that gas line will be essentially run through that area down to the south, because there is no gas further south. There's a, a large gas connection, gas meter in the back, and bringing it along the site is much more, I guess, much more reasonable than going here and trenching through a cor, a school corridor to, to bring the gas to the south.
The timing on that, when will you do the gas line, and then when will you do the parking?
So this, this would also happen possibly during a school vacation time, but it would not interrupt the school activity.
Well, the traffic pattern there and the warning is really hard.
I was going to ask if you.
And now you're adding construction. Yeah, I mean, that's been horrible.
So the other thing with, with Downs.
Trucks going in with the cars, and they're insane.
So, in terms of, in terms of, everything, that is understood. There's been discussions with the administration. The way, the way that Downs works is that they'll coordinate the bell times, so the, the drop-off, the pickup.
Could you just remind us, who's Downs?
Downs Construction.
Oh, they're going to do the action.
They are the construction manager for the project. So they will, they have already met with the administration. Further discussion will happen exactly to when this, when this happens, but when the drop-off and pickup occur, they'll actually shut the gates, so no vehicles will be coming in or exiting. Any deliveries that are coming to the site, they'll specifically, specifically be told not to deliver. So they'll be coordinating the delivery times as well to not conflict with the drop-off and pickup times.
Where are they going to wait?
They might, they might just have to keep driving, because they, they won't.
In front of the school, the traffic backs up, going in and in the northbound entrance.
Probably down the street.
Yes, they're in the street. Plus, it's gridlocked in that driveway, and you're describing, we've got twenty-three head-in parking places. They're now going to go, once you're in, you're not getting out.
Right, exactly. So the intention, these are administration and visitor. They'll be signed specifically to, once you're in there, you're, you're in there, so. It actually opens up, makes us thirty feet wide to allow for easier circulation through, as well as emergency access. Fire lane is thirty feet wide, so it also, as far as the fire department or any emergency access, really improves that situation. Right now, you've got parallel parking along the left-hand side, a small lane to drive, and then parent, parent drop-off on the far-right side. So we'll open that area up considerably.
So where's the open space from the back of the parked car?
From the back of the parked car to the curb is thirty feet. So we'll open it up thirty feet.
So you still have two lanes, one for through traffic, one for drop-off is still there?
There'll be the drop-off and then through lane.
And then the parking.
And then the parking, which will be completely off the, the drag.
But it seems to narrow on the other end.
Naturally, it does narrow in this location, and it narrows. It's a little, little more narrow at this, this end. The intention is just to, just to improve, to be able to put the parking in. This whole drive will remain as it is today, but it, it opens up the, the circulation pattern.
In the, you mentioned that the drainage from the media center area is going to be tied into some kind of pipe that takes it to the west. What about the other corner where the auditorium is?
Down, down here? So there'll be an infiltration system. There'll be a, a drywall associated with that at a lower elevation, so as, as the, the water rises up, the way it's calculated is that, that will accommodate a twenty-five-year-long, you know, full infiltration. If, if it happens to back up at any point, there's an outlet so that, that yard, your drain grate would actually bubble out. So this southern portion of, of drainage on the road actually ties in and empties out to the south. So we don't want to tie into that and create, you know, further complication with any, any other of the, you know, storm system that doesn't tie into the actual town storm system. Further to the north, I understand there's kind of a peak in the, in the flow, and it, the rest of it drains this way into the town system, whereas the south actually exits out somewhere.
Does that go to Hopbrook? Does that drain to Hopbrook?
I'm not sure which route it takes, but as I understand it, kind of goes to the south.
There's a street there with houses on it.
Sims Croft, yeah, correct. So anyways, the, we don't want to impact that, so the goal is we infiltrate.
You're keeping it on the property?
Infiltration system on the property, yes.
For a twenty-five-year event?
Right.
For greater than twenty-five years?
It, it should still accommodate the, that system, or that system will accommodate that drainage without allowing it to percolate out of that catch that are the, you know, drain cover.
But obviously, a twenty-five-year event happens probably.
More frequently.
More frequently than a hundred-year event, but every once in a while, we have a pretty big one. And what's going to happen? The water's going to get down the street to the south?
It will, it will flow across the surface, so the ground, and naturally, the grate is, is going to the south, so it will. It will eventually go to that system. So the, the option was to either directly tie it in, or, or not tie it in, try to infiltrate it, and I think we can pick up most of the water, not all of it, essentially, as I mentioned, a twenty-five-year storm, it would be infiltrated. There's, there's storage there. If it happens to overtop that, that grate cover, it would, it would surface well into the system.
Adam, was that?
This is one of the aspects we're going to be working with the applicant through, over the next couple of weeks before the next public hearing, which is kind of how, essentially, what are the numbers associated with this, because a lot of times they might detain up to twenty-five-year storm, and then the fifty or hundred-year storm, you're only going to see half a CFS or one CFS actually discharged from the system, which during those storm events would not be noticeable. However, some of the concerns you brought up in terms of the overflow would eventually get to the street is certainly something we want to look at. So over the next, you know, week, I think we're going to try to work with the engineer for the project, BSE, to work through that, come up with a solution that we're comfortable with, and make sure we can address those. At the end of the day, they are going to be complying with the usual requirements of not increasing deep runoff during all storm events. It's just looking at, in that instance of a twenty-five-year storm, what are, what are we talking about, or a fifty-year storm, in terms of what's leaving the site? So we'll, we'll be looking at that more closely this week and next.
The media center, I presume that's kind of taking the library?
Correct.
And where's the library now?
The library's on the second floor.
So, yeah, Amy can talk about some of the sheet light.
The current library takes up these four green spaces here. So the space that's here is going to move into the blue block down the main level, and then we're turning those into new classrooms.
So the dark green indicates a major renovation or alteration in this case. Minor is the, the light green. Not in scope is the, is the gray. Sprinkler improvements are the, the white and throughout.
By the time the project's done, the entire building will be sprinkled.
And then the, the blue are the, the new construction.
What's the dark green over there? What are you doing in the home ec?
So there's, there's current home ec, wood shop. They're getting a new home ec area, Family Consumer Sciences, a new Family Consumer Sciences lab, which would include anything other than cooking. It's got sewing, different projects along those lines. There's a tech engineering multipurpose lab, which is going to be one of the robotics, different experiments that they would, and that would work in conjunction with the computer lab, so they can design something on the computer, and then put it to work in the lab and actually build what they're trying to design. And then we're also putting back a materials processing lab, which is a fancy way of saying wood shop.
Does the media center actually connect hallways into that wing?
So you would be able to access into the computer lab and the materials processing lab through the maker space, which is connected into the media center. Although a lot of this space is all connected programmatically with their curriculum, so it makes sense to have it flow through so students can go to the maker space. That could have potentially 3D printers and have computers. Maker spaces a lot of times have different building materials that aren't necessarily building as in like wood shop building. So that's all connected together from outside.
And the other access off the other wall is to where the offices used to be?
That's where the offices used to be, yes. So we're creating a little lobby space over there off of that, that you'd be able to access off the main corridor here.
And this is going on while schools in session?
There's phasing. It's going to happen, just like Brendan was talking about on the outside.
That's a lot of space that's going through major renovation.
So there's different phases for each day. We've worked with the administration already to talk about which rooms they can give up, and they're going to for next curriculum year, basically for them. Which rooms can we take? What we can do during summers, what we can do during breaks. That way the students aren't interrupted, and they, some teachers might just have to move classrooms. Instead of every teacher having their own classroom, it might be a tough year for them, or they don't have their own space, and they need to go into a new space. The other big part of this project is we're adding up to the science labs. So we're adding six science labs, three on the first floor, three on the second floor, that will have pre-rooms shared. It creates the cluster system that we use now, so you'd have one, two, three clusters, and then one, two, three clusters on each level for seven and eight.
Could you remind me, where's the library space?
This is the library space.
Yes, moving from the space where the library was when I was a student there, which was a long time ago. Do you people?
They have books in the room.
Because he was an abacus. I mean, the man gave calculus. Now, tell me something. Was one of those color codes to designate the currently sprinkler space?
The, the white, the white actually indicates minor work and, and sprinkler improvements.
To be done?
Throughout, right.
So there's no clear indication of where sprinklers currently exist. You're just marking where they'll be at. And when it's done, the whole place is sprinkled.
Correct.
How about air conditioning? Is any of that building air-conditioned?
The existing building, there's a few rooms, like the admin is air-conditioned. So there's a few computer labs that are, when we're done. The auditorium, I believe, has AC.
It will.
And the media center will.
I believe you got a rooftop here that's associated with that, so that portion.
It is not currently scheduled to be AC throughout the entire building.
Natural air. Sustainable energy integrated into the new additions, or?
Well, I mean, good building practice, we always go towards. go towards green practices.
Yeah, I really wish we would give them forward, moving all that stuff around the town.
The air conditioning must be, the whole building being touched.
You'd think.
Okay, we disrupted you, I think.
Yes, sorry.
That's fine. Good questions, and, you know, and associated with the media center is also courtyard, which we really want to be an educational space. It's important that, you know, we don't lose this, it's just, you know, we don't want an open lawn area. We want classroom activities out in that space. So I'll, I'll show you some, the direction that this is heading. It's, it's a fun, fun space. First, I'll just kind of show you, I think this was also in your packet as well, some elevations, just to give you an idea. If you wanted to check, this is, this is the south elevation of the, of the auditorium. There's a rooftop unit, and keep in mind that this rooftop unit is actually set back on the roof. It's really in the center, so when you, when you view this as
The roof looks like school.
When you view this as an elevation, it, it shows up as much.
The rooftop unit is really way back in this corner, so when you're looking at it straight on the elevation, it seems very overwhelming, but really, to perceive that, I think that's in the packet too.
I, I've got those actually.
Pretty far back, not really as crazy, but it's here.
What about from the front?
People are losing some.
I think there's two.
So you can't see that from across the street, people across Firetown? All the houses across Firetown?
I think in one of the packets, I have an image of that. You have a, probably those are the people that have you.
Before I forget, see, we have a, so, these are actually used from Firetown Road. So this is all remodeling, so when you're standing in the road and looking to the building at these different vantage points, you can see that this, this doesn't really, isn't as imposing as it looks right here, but we've actually added in from the town comment, added in a louver, a louvered screen.
And that will be on all sides?
Three sides.
Three sides.
So we're going to go to the back?
Not to the back, so if you're in the parking lot, you'd probably be seeing one from the parking lot.
He's just folding them.
It's a hoarder.
Sorry.
So it'd be three sides, it'd be the south side, east side, and the north side. So either approach on Firetown, that's essentially what you would see, so very little.
So it's wood?
No, metal.
Metal louver?
Yeah, it's going to be metal. It would create a dress appearance.
Why don't the architects switch to her? Material-wise, so you're trying to match brick, or what is?
Matching.
Correct. Most of the, I mean, the field's red, to match what's out there right now. We'd have accent color that is just slightly different, just to add a little interest in trying to bring the scale of this down.
But how does that match the other doors? Because do we have red doors on the rest of the building?
You do.
Okay, I think, we did it a couple of years ago.
Red doors, and then you've got red trim, right?
Okay, and then the upper?
This would be a metal panel.
Oh, it's a metal panel.
Is it a matte finish, or?
It wouldn't be shiny.
It wouldn't be shiny, yeah.
There are other metal panel-ish features on the existing building, and there, kind of, there might be some in the back.
Oh, yeah. Jim.
So.
We're trying to keep in context what's out there, not trying to introduce anything new.
So that's, that's the south addition. This would be the Firetown kind of looking. I want to take this thing out.
And the other one?
Yeah, we might as well. So this view right here is this elevation, right here, and that one is the one we just talked about right here. And then moving to the, you might want to slide over here.
Has designer review looked at any of this?
This will be on their agenda in two weeks, because we still have a lot of design issues with the drainage, as you're aware of. So this has not been before design review yet.
Doesn't look like the colonial things that.
Yeah, the, the existing building isn't, isn't exactly.
Turn that one off.
But it is very massive in the front, and the, you know, the people on, what's the street right across from them?
Fairview.
Fairview with the next one over.
Especially, yeah, an auditorium where it's, it's a big volume, you know, it's.
Put it in front.
I mean, if the sunrise reflects back down the street, it should be blinded when she comes out of her house.
That's my rule, that's where the plant's going, it's a little bit of.
There's going to be some buffer.
Yeah. So the, the two views, the two elevations on the top, as I mentioned, one on the left is the south view, and this is kind of the east elevation. The media center incorporates some, some more glass into, into the elevation. This is the door that I mentioned that we provide access to, would be right here, so that's kind of that western-looking elevation.
So the media center has the same metallic siding there?
This is actually glass.
Glass.
No, glass.
This is all glass up here, along this side, and then back at the ground. The vertical pieces in here are the metal panel.
And the glass is clear, bare glass?
Yes.
So you're facing?
With slightly.
That's north.
Jittered, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a loggy, glazing.
We've got an image of that as well.
Wait, it's north.
So.
So this faces east? So it'll face the morning sun.
And this faces north?
Right. There's one north going in, but the east side is, it's got a building.
East side has a building. That's two.
Not very much, yeah.
Two stories.
Yeah, it's not very much.
And then these are some partials, some elevations within the, within the courtyard. That's kind of an elevation looking in this direction. There's also a rooftop unit, would be screened. If you're standing in the courtyard, you'd be screened. And then that's, that's another section. I guess that's looking back.
Yeah.
Probably in this, this direction. So as, as far as the courtyard is concerned, so we really want to use this and make this, what might otherwise be kind of a leftover space into something very valuable for education. So outdoor tables and chairs kind of in the seating area. These, this patterning, actually, there'd be seats, kind of bench seats around these spaces, so, you know, class could sit here and the teacher could address them. It would be porous pavers throughout, little precast concrete paper, stone mulch bed, incorporating flowering trees and shrubs, ornamental grasses, which is dogwood, piers, hydrangea, clamatus, actually, because there is a lot of brick associated with that for the stacking that has to happen on the inside for books and whatnot, creates a lot of, a lot of brick. So in order to scale that down, we've, we're going to incorporate a green screen, so growing up, kind of give it an architectural element, as well as growing some vines, so clamatus, so it would add a lot of color. So that would happen on this wall and this wall right here. And it would also give us the opportunity to incorporate some student artwork within the space. So, and I can, I'll show you the image of that as well.
So how does this relate to the classroom, or actually, you've got guidance currently.
This is our guidance.
Yeah, so how do we, if you have a classroom going out outside the guidance window, how do you screen that, I guess?
The intention wouldn't be to, wouldn't be to screen. We want to keep it visible. It's got to be a visible space, and it's, it's not going to be people out there yelling and screaming, it's going to be a kind of a, you know, space for studying, a space for, you know, the teacher addressing students, people going out and reading. This space right here off of the maker space, they could potentially move these tables or the chairs out of the way and possibly construct something out in that space. But a lot of bench seating. So this is a view right here, looking into the courtyard, so you'd be standing right here, kind of looking and capturing that, that view. This would be a relocated memorial, the Patty Lou Peters. Memorial is currently located on site, right in this location, so we're going to incorporate that with memorial stone plaque, some, some plantings. This shows the dogwood, kind of the centerpiece, as well as seating. Currently proposed granite bench seating throughout. Obviously, we've got some hydrangea, rhododendron, incorporating some native ferns, stone mulch as a whole maintenance surfacing, some accent boulders throughout, some ornamental grasses, and then also the green screen on these walls, incorporating some of the student artwork into, into these panels.
Do you have bids for this?
We haven't.
Not that far in the process.
We've been doing estimates on this, so we've actually just gotten done with the design development estimate. We are on budget, so things are looking good and looking forward.
But you, you don't really know whether you can afford this.
We, based on all the estimates, two professional estimators, we can afford this so far, so.
Okay.
This just indicates some of the material features in this space. There will be a camera in this area, security. As I mentioned, the visibility out into this space, we'd like to keep it visible and, you know, monitored.
So is that a monitor that's constantly preserved? Or is that?
I don't think the intention is to allow students out there without a teacher.
Without a teacher. Some of the upper, some of the eighth grade students might be let out there, you know, here in the media center, you know, controlled access, to be able to read out there.
I get that part, but you said it's going to be monitored, a camera.
It's up to the administration, right.
You don't know if anybody's going to watch it?
I, I don't have control with the intention of setting a camera out there. The administration would ask for one, so. So this, this is a view. So this is a view, standing here, looking, looking south to the media center addition, and you can capture that, would be a beach, beach tree off to the right, so obviously getting quite large at some point. The, as you can see, a lot of glass incorporated, some of the metal panel materials, unifying the rest of the building design. That's the access, emergency egress door at that location. This is the, start here. You're driving south on Firetown, this elevation, hopefully you can all see that. So it would be this elevation. This is the walkway heading in, right here. So some larger shade trees, such as sweet gum, yellowwood, tulip tree, also flowering, so gives, gives some added interest, some dogwoods and some, some red buds. These are the smaller trees, kind of around, closer to the building, as well as foundation This view right here is actually looking, looking towards the north. There's an egress door right here and here, so right there and there. And those red buds and dogwoods kind of wrap around the south end. So that, that's, the intention is to bring some, you know, color and interest and kind of bring down the scale of that mass for the other floor here. So all in all, we are in compliance with the zoning regulations, and we're working through, you know, the staff comments, and we believe that everything can be resolved. I think we've resolved most of it right now, and we, we look forward to your approval.
Just one more question.
Yeah.
The plantings that are there, I understand there's a point, I think he made, and it's in the documents, that those are illustrative of the plantings.
The ones, the ones right there are illustrative.
My question is just about the scale and the maturity of those trees. Are they the size in a, in a part of height and bulk that are going to be planted when the construction ends?
I would say about, now 10, 10 years or so after. I mean, it's, obviously, it takes a little while for the trees to get established, I mean, it can be done 10, 15 years after. They aren't showing, they aren't showing huge. The dogwoods, dogwoods and redwoods, you know, max out, say, 25 feet tall. The tulip tree gets much, much larger, 50, 60 feet tall. The yellow, yellowwood, maybe even 40, 40-foot range, 35, 40.
So the planted heights on a dogwood tree, for instance, when it's installed as part of the construction?
So when it's, so most of the trees, any deciduous tree would be two, two to two-and-a-half inch caliber, which is our standard. The, the dogwoods may be 10, 12 feet high, and they would also be two to two-and-a-half caliber.
The trees that are there now are all going away, or?
No, they're, actually, that tree to the left that you see, which is much larger than existing red maple tree.
Yeah, and there's some trees there.
Which would remain. But there, there is a grid of trees out there, which will largely be impacted by, by that addition. And they're kind of planted in a, in a way that, you know, at some point, I think it was maybe the 98 improvements kind of marched a grid of trees across the property. And obviously, we can't overlook that because it's, it's right in the footprint of where it makes more sense to be up toward the future.
But there is an intention to try and save the trees, the larger trees there?
The ones that we can, yes, yeah. And we've got safety barrier around it, you know, the, the section that'll get you near the drift line.
For public use of the auditorium, what is the access?
For.
For new performance?
For performance, people would park in the back, and use the existing entry, the adult entrance into the new. This lobby would be utilized, our main entrance to the, our corridor would be back here. So utilizing existing entry for that, come in here. Really, the doors on this end are really more for emergency exit, exiting. And then even like this guy here, kids are building sets, you'd have some access to materials in that way, but it is not public entry on the side, is not intended for that.
What comes with the pointed area of the?
Back here?
Yeah.
That's the controlled loop, actually.
And that space, did you say that is air-conditioned?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Impressive.
See you in two weeks.
Yes. Mike, for the purposes of clarification now, we're considering a special exception, which, subsequent to that, in recorded design review, so that the special exception really is not involved in any of the architectural or design aspects of this, since it's before design review.
Correct. Well, I mean, design review is also, they're granting you a, a advisory opinion on the design landscaping, et cetera. So you, you actually have, because it's a special exception, you could consider potential impact to the adjacent neighborhood. For example, if you felt that, to the size of that auditorium addition, that it poses a visual impact to the budding neighbors, the budding residential property to the east, that you felt that additional landscaping is required, you have every right to request additional landscaping.
Okay, but the procedure that we would follow would be to, we would have to close the public hearing by January seventh, but then we would not act on it until, or we could delay acting on it until we hear from design review.
I would keep, staff's recommendation to us, keep the public hearing open, because we have design issues that we're still ironing out, which.
I think it has to be closed by the seventh.
Yeah, you have, statutory, you have time to your next, we're only talking fourteen days from today, two weeks from today.
I know, but we're gonna, one, is design review going to see it?
In two weeks.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, 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 exactly. Sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I caught, you know, that's okay, I caught.
As soon as I do it in one shot, though.
Yeah, assuming that they do it in one shot. But we still could close the public hearing and wait for design review.
We had to.
I don't know.
I would, I would say to you, if you have comments or concerns about landscaping or potential mass of the building, you have, because it's a special permit, you have every right to make the applicant aware, and they have time to address it. Because ultimately, it's gonna come to the zoning commission for approval. Yes, you're getting the advisory opinion from design review, but it, it's the zoning commission that has the authority to say yea or nay on this. Or say that there are additional safeguards, such as, like I said, beefing up the landscaping around the front of the building.
But we never want to be all alone. Anyway, yes, okay, I understand. We just want to make sure that, clarify the process. So we will, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to seeing you in another couple of weeks. So.
Let's continue the public hearing.
I just do a motion to continue.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue the public hearing for application eighteen sixty-three to our next regular meeting on the seventeenth. Seconded?
Seconded by Mike. All, all, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, six, nothing. Continue the public hearing to the next meeting. Okay, we have application eighteen fifty-nine for the zone change on property two forty-one, two forty-five Hot Meadows Street. Comments, commissioners?
I think it's unusual that it has an I three or even a.
I agree with you.
I do, whatever.
Unique.
What's the only thing left on?
Seems everybody seems to be happy with that.
In a, in a lots of B three.
Lots of B three.
Massive sweeping change.
Okay, are we ready to act on this?
Is there a direct motion?
Yeah. I move to approve application eighteen fifty-nine of Joel D. Weisman and Gerald Placus, agents two forty-one, two forty-five, Hot Meadows Street LLC owner for zone change from I two to P three on the property located at two forty-one, two forty-five Hot Meadows Street. Approval is based on the map illustrating zone change titled two forty-one to two forty-five Hot Meadows Street LLC. Zone change application plan prepared by me and Ingood, dated October fourth, twenty eighteen. Effective date for the change is Thursday, December twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Second?
Seconded by Donna. Any discussions, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, six, nothing. Okay, application eight.
This is Spencer's order. Good luck.
Good luck. Application eighteen sixty-one. Ensign Vicar, isn't it Ensign Vicar or Donna Bell?
Ensign Vicar.
Huh?
Ensign Vicar.
It says.
I know.
Donna Bell owns the building. They, we sold the, we rent back from them.
Yeah, so it's Donna, the property owner.
They're the owner, but it's our project.
Okay.
But they are the property owners.
Comments or, Ms. Bruce, Mike? Bruce, you happy with it? You worked it?
I'm, I'm fine with that. I think it's a great.
He just wants to know what they're making.
Yeah.
Blows off.
Blows off and it doesn't fit in a backpack. It's twenty-four feet long.
What if it gets dropped on the sidewalk?
Is there a draft motion on the?
Yes, right here. You want to make it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve application eighteen sixty-one of Scott Bray's PDS Engineering and Construction Agent, the Dyno Bell Inc. owner, for a special exception pursuant to Article seven, Section M seven B of the Towne-Simsbury zoning regulations for filling and grading in the floodplain on the property located at six forty Hot Meadows Street. The special exception approval is subject to the following conditions. One, administrative zoning permit is required for construction activities. Two, onsite pre-construction meeting is required with the Z E O and floodplain manager prior to start of construction activities. Number three, any changes which involve additional work within the floodplain require approval from the zoning commission. End of motion.
We're here second.
I'll second.
Donna seconded it. Any comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, six, nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your patience, too.
Yes.
Well, we know more about Henry James School than.
You didn't go there, huh?
Nope.
And he's not going to. Okay, application eight.
Michael, there are changes. We don't have to do anything with the actual building part of it?
Or?
The loading dock.
It's just the filling and grading that trigger, or physical expansion of the building that triggers special exception. If you're doing a, a, improving a building that's located in a flood, floodplain and it's a considerable substantial improvement, it's just handled through the building permit process.
Okay.
Unless it's a.
So they don't need a site plan amendment for the building?
No, no.
Eighteen sixty-two, no action is required. That motion was tabled to the.
To our next meeting.
Next meeting. And eighteen sixty-three, the public hearing is still open, so we're on to new business. And it's application eighteen sixty-four for text amendment by Mike on our behalf. We need to schedule a public hearing and refer to planning.
So we're able to advertise this so that it's, so we can have the public hearing at the next meeting for this zone text amendment? The only action I need of the commission is to refer it to the planning commission.
Okay.
Pursuant to eight, three A of general state statutes.
Okay. How about a motion, Mr. Secretary?
Yeah, make a motion regarding application eighteen sixty-four of Michael Gooden to refer this application to the planning commission for their review. So it went to what section?
Connecticut General State Statutes eight dash three A.
What he said.
Second?
Seconded by Jackie. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, six, nothing, so refer to planning. General commission business, we.
Dave, I had a, a point I wanted to raise that, it's not about the referral, but about the context of what we're doing here. I noticed that the brew pubs are permitted in the center zone, you know, in our center. And it, it's not considered, it's considered bar and restaurant, it's in that category, brew pub. When we think of the language associated with, you know, the change that we're about to make, I'm not sure if we're moving that, too. But more to the point, I was thinking, I wondered if there's some sort of a, something happening with distilleries, so craft distilleries or something like that might just be added to where we already allow brew pubs as an alternative to what we're, the approach we're taking. But I know, I don't remember anybody in Simsbury, you know, petitioning for a craft distillery. In other states, they are, it's quite a well-recognized.
The powder, the powder force guy is doing that, isn't he?
Yeah, that's what this is all about.
I'm not sure what he calls his business, and I don't know what the category of his license is, but.
It's a distillery, but it's really a craft distillery.
Yeah. It's small scale. I, I've been over there to see it, to meet with him. He has one still set up right now. He has a room where he's, the other, like basically the mash is, is waiting to be distilled. He has another where they're, they were aging bourbon in, in barrels. It's, it's very, it's small scale.
I know, but I think, I think Bruce's point is.
Just a text amendment versus a.
Text amendment, we'd like to make it something like craft instead. We don't want Gordons to come in here and take over Andy's and put in, you know, five-hundred person distillery.
See, under restaurant, bar in that category, bar, tavern, cocktail lounge, nightclub, brew pub, they're all already listed. And by definition, they mean anything that the zoning officer is convinced is similar. And so I guess when I think about what our conversation with the distiller is, I don't know exactly what a definition is for a craft distillery, but I guess my thought, as I think I expressed earlier, was another approach to this would be just tack another term on there.
Micro-distillery or something like that, or.
Yeah. But I, I think some of these terms that are there relate to license categories of the state. Because they issue a license for brew pubs. They have a tavern license, do they have a bar license? I don't, I don't know a lot about this, but anyway. I just thought it was simpler than kind of disrupting what light industry means, because light industry, you know, I'm reluctant to just, you know, I'm not excited about putting light industry in the center. You know, the way it's described and defined in our regulation, but it's about, you know, what.
I mean, for example, we did that with the bicycle thing.
Right. Yeah, I know.
Which, which I think is fine, and it's not disruptive in.
Right, right.
Terms of the neighbors and so forth.
Right. Yeah.
And also because a liquor license is required for this use, you would have a special exception, independent of your change of use or administrative review that would occur if someone were to open a, an additional brewery or distillery in town. So you would have a, that, that special permit to give you a degree of, of discretion on reviewing the scope and intensity of the use. So you could take, you know, if hours operation, delivery or other sort of activities associated with the use, you could possibly put some restrictions on time a day, et cetera.
Impact on the neighborhood. Doesn't our special exception give us that?
Yeah, yes.
Anyway, I think, sounds to me like.
Well, the other thought, I, I mean, I'm surprised when I see brew pub there, you don't see wine bar, but.
Said winery, didn't it?
Yeah. It's a lot bigger than a wine bar.
Yeah, exactly. A winery isn't, is not, but the state of Connecticut issues perm, licenses like Rosedale Farm has for a winery, you know, on the, on the farm.
But a brew pub, a wine bar, a bourbon bar, you know, it's all a bar, right?
Good point. And so I should maybe just add something onto this listing of what bar, restaurant means, rather than contaminating the definition of light industry.
I think that's the approach we're taking, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, we're, instead of trying to introduce light industrial into the center code, we're looking to modify the text to, to add a distillery in.
Was this in your packet, the, the application, along with the supporting documentation that I paired?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Online, yeah.
So breweries, wineries and distilleries are gonna be characterized in the future as light industry?
No.
No.
No, that's the point.
Instead of.
Instead of.
Right, right now, your regs say you can't.
There is no light industry.
Those uses are not allowed, period, in the center of town. So if you wanted to open up a brewery, you could not do that in Simsbury Center.
You could open a brew pub.
Yeah, but I.
So what's the difference?
It's right here.
Really, then, then we're talking like, we're getting into discussion, do you have a kitchen serving food, you know?
It's already here, Mike.
No, I understand. I understand, and that's why last month, or last meeting, I brought this before the commission with Frank Luca from Pottermun Spirits, because we, we could not call him a brew pub. Based on his licensing, et cetera. I mean, he has no intentions of serving food, really, with this. Just whiskey and bourbon.
I understand.
And vodka, sorry, vodka is the other thing that's brewing right now.
You start with vodka, because you don't have to age it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, I mean, I, I don't want to belabor this, but the, the brew pub license doesn't require selling food that the state issues. You don't have to sell food.
Right. Some of them you can't.
You actually do, of course.
You do.
So with a distillery.
Brew pub.
No, brew pub, you don't.
The brew pub, you do.
With a brew pub, you have to sell food?
You do.
In a bar?
Yeah.
You have to sell food?
Mm-hmm.
I was reading today, but anyway, I'm not an expert at this. I just thought it would be simpler to tack on, you know, craft distillery, right after the word, you know, that's already there, as I pointed out. The word brew pub is already there, put a comma and put in craft distillery, call it a day. Oh, after our public hearing, text amendment. Now, is that too much of a change after we hear from the public and have a little more discussion?
Well, this is a commission-sponsored text amendment. The only thing I'd ask, if we were to change it, if I have to amend it.
Yeah.
We're in our timeframe based on what's required to be filed with the town clerk. I just have to check on what we put in for the public, the notice.
I don't, I don't quite understand why we would change it from what we have proposed.
I thought that solved the problem.
Right.
Didn't create another.
I guess I, I must, I'm puzzled as to what we approve then.
So you guys are looking to add distilleries, wineries and breweries as a restaurant, bar category under the Simsbury Center Code, because it's currently listed as light industrial under the center code, and we don't allow light industrial. So you're just taking that lump category, you're moving it from light industrial to restaurant.
My point is, we're trying to help a guy who wants to have a distillery down here.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have anybody who wants to build a winery in the center of Simsbury.
Yeah.
At this point, right?
Right, but why can't we add that now? Like, that's.
Well, I, I think that a winery is different, in my mind, because of the connection with the growing of the grapes and the product. But, I mean, you might say if you're gonna make vodka, somebody's growing potatoes and other things, so.
But a lot of wineries don't grow grapes.
Of course, they're on grapes, yeah.
A lot of wineries.
It's common to only need to grow twenty-five percent of what you're using.
You don't have to grow any, though.
But it doesn't have to be on the property that you grow. You don't have to do the, the wine making at the same place as the farm.
Right.
Breaking them up is gonna confuse things, too.
Okay.
And, and it's, remember, a special exception, so you've got a control over it.
And we've had inquiries on breweries potentially in the center, so this, although they've yet to come to the stage like Frank and say, I'm looking at something in the center, they have approached our office about potential breweries in the center of town.
We lost one to Avon, not two, I'm correct.
And what's we do? And what type of business was that? Did they have a restaurant with it? Was it a brew pub?
Brewery.
They're just making beer?
Just making beer, selling it out of a taste room and selling it to the public.
Perfect use of.
Okay, I think it's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to the discussion of short-term rentals. Did everybody look at Robyn's characterizations and? at Robin's characterizations and... Do they have comments about it? Since nobody's saying anything, I'll say it.
Indeed, thought.
I have thought about this and, as I say, like, using them, so trying to do something that's both permissive and controlling. And it seems to me that the conclusion Robin's memo leads to is we really ought to let the selectmen regulate it through an ordinance and license it because they have a control that doesn't exist when you give a property a right. It stays with that property, whereas if the selectmen decide that these people are misbehaving, it's quite easy for them to deny or revoke the license. And that adding complexity to the ownership of a property is essentially removing rights that a property owner has that we really don't need to do. That's my opinion, but...
I agree with you. This gives rooms to give the availability to the owner, and it's theirs to lose.
Right. I think zoning is a blunt instrument.
The only thing that... I don't know whether... The only thing that bothers me about that is that the whole idea of the owner having to be the primary... Having the residents be occupied by the owner.
But our... What we're doing is saying, let... Option three is to let the selectmen deal with regulating it through an ordinance.
So that would be something they would have to write through their ordinance?
Something they have to write, and, you know, the police could control. Normally...
Do we make a recommendation to them, then?
We could make a recommendation to them.
Because that would be the only... The only thing that I would want to see followed through is not having empty houses as basically rental property. Part of what you both said, I agree with the police because it seems like their police, from what I've heard, have their hands tied when it comes to these kind of things. They're saying they can't regulate this. They can't do anything.
Well, how about this?
I don't think the police are saying that. Police are saying that they didn't see anything that was objectionable.
Okay.
So I think you're talking about one particular property where we've got complaints. They're just saying they didn't see any criminal aspect. People are parking on a public road. There's nothing that the police department can do about those things. But items such as parking can be taken care of and addressed through an ordinance or a regulation, whatever way you guys lean towards. If it's towards an ordinance for the board of selectmen, then essentially the only change made to our regulations is it's an as-of-right use. They don't have to come and see us, but then it's regulated through the board of selectmen, which they're going to have a lot more discretion and a kind of broader sweeping pen, so to speak. And from a violation perspective, their stuff is not going to be appealable like it would be through our process because we have to follow that zoning statute, and everything is appealable. And as Dave said, it's going to... It would be a right to that property owner through the zoning reg versus the ordinance, which would be revocable through the board of selectmen. So there's a lot more discretion through the board of selectmen ordinance route than there would be through the zoning route, but you can go either way.
I'd be happy to kick it back to that.
Well, I think that's probably the right thing because the problem becomes one of, I think, police controlling bad activities. And if the response to controlling a bad activity is go to find the zoning enforcement officer, get her to issue a citation, then you take it to the Z B A. Seems to me it's off in Never Never Land that shouldn't be. Anyway.
I agree.
I have a point, though, that, you know, we got a copy of a memo that's dated July 2nd from Mike to Maria Capriola that says, "The planning department, along with the board of selectmen, received complaints on short-term residential rentals in Simsbury, and the planning department, and the town manager's office, and the town attorney are developing a plan in order to address this issue." I'm interested in what the town attorney's contribution to the process was. What's his determination on this? Where's the plan?
There is no plan. So the contribution was a discussion of, first of all, a review of our regs and are they currently allowed under our regs, which he agreed with staff that the way that our regs are written, it's not currently allowed. So that was kind of the only contribution to date. And then it kind of went on hiatus because, if you remember, back in August, we kind of started putting this on your agenda for discussion, but we've been super busy, so we haven't really got to discuss it. And then in October, I wanted to narrow it down a little bit so that you guys could kind of see what your options really were for this topic. So we have the three options that we're going over tonight. So town staff, though, did start working on what would be a potential ordinance if we were going to look at an ordinance. We only met twice, but we do have, you know, a few pages worked out, kind of like the bare bones of just setting it up. But no discussion has taken place at any upper levels like the board of selectmen or with the town manager. It was just kind of a work session, so to speak.
We have... This subject has come up at staff meetings with Bob D. We meet with Bob DiCrescenzo, our attorney, once a month. And really, you know, Robin's memo was shared with him, and he agreed with your options and kind of deferred to the commission on which route do you want to go. He would provide guidance to the commission on whatever option this commission wanted to choose. The only... The other cautionary tilt was if it's regulated via a zoning regulation, we run into potential conflict with the fair housing law, federal regulation dealing with how a local zoning ordinance can regulate basically residential uses, whether it be owning or renting a house. So that was the other, like, warning, like, if you do choose to regulate via zoning, we need to make sure that it passes the fair housing test. So we're not setting up a reg that we're just going to end up in federal court finding out we violated someone's federal rights. So the ordinance group may eliminate a lot of those issues.
Good.
But we still review that with Bob once a draft is prepared.
In reviewing the reference material you gave us some months ago, Mike, on... It's called "Land Use Issues and Implications of Short-Term Rentals." This material is originally prepared by and with thanks to Jacqueline Kaufman, some lawyers. And it has illustrations. It has information about Hartford and Nashville and New Jersey City, New Jersey, and a couple of other places. I... It wasn't clear to me, I'm looking through those, if there was a prevalence. Philadelphia's in here. If there was a prevalence for one way or the other, whether they were doing regulating by short-term rentals by zoning action or by, you know, their administrative department, as we're referring to the selectmen here. They have other institutions in those places, but shouldn't we give some weight to what we see even though there are not many examples of certainly communities our size trying to regulate short-term residence... Residential or rental units? I think that's what you've told us before. So we're in territory where we're going to have to look at other locations that are out of scale. But is there something that you can say about that? It just... It feels to me like we should be thinking about sort of the wider world here, not just what's more convenient for us and what the Simsbury Police Department may or may not be able to deal with if there's, you know, complaints about activities in a short-term rental unit. Did you... Do you have a sense from this material which is more prevalent?
Nationally, they're done by ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Mainly because, like, what I cited, too, it's the fair housing issues that pop up from a zoning regulation.
Well, I don't know. Why didn't DiCrescenzo just say that?
Well, it was giving you some latitude to determine how you want to...
Come on.
The goal is not to steer you guys in any option. You guys are the zoning commission, and you make land use decisions.
I know, but we don't... We're not paid to study this stuff and know the nuances.
But it wasn't our opinions or Bob's opinion that we wanted you to key in on. It's what you guys felt as a board was the appropriate route for Simsbury. Because nationally, what you're going to see are very large cities that are doing this. There are not a lot of towns that are kind of addressing this issue. I think they're addressing it sort of like we are as it comes up and it presents an issue.
Reactionary.
It's reactionary to something.
So should we just vote on strategy number three and pass the buck on to the board of selectmen?
Whatever strategy you guys want.
Or do we need to struggle with a recommended regulation form?
No, no, no. Do we need to do a vote? Is that where we are?
You guys should.
But we don't send any recommendations to them or any concerns that we have?
You could. Absolutely, you could.
I mean, we've discussed it a lot. I mean, I don't know.
You would like them to look at and address during that ordinance kind of setup. I think that that's completely appropriate for you guys to do.
We can do that during the public hearing process, as well.
I'm going to have to show up.
You can write.
I'll go with you.
But we wouldn't do our text amendment until there was something on the licensing side of it. Because we don't want to give it as a right and then not have it regulated.
Yeah, it's a good point.
That is a really good point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We would not recommend...
No, we would not recommend adding anything until the board of selectmen has worked through an ordinance. But the chain of events would mean maybe they work on an ordinance, get it so that it's slightly ready, and then you guys would act first to add it as a text amendment, and then they would push forward with their public hearing for the ordinance.
I'd almost say, actually, this we do both concurrently.
Yeah, same time, but...
You could.
It's a risk that...
But theirs could be approved before the ordinance. That's the only thing, because some of our ordinances take quite a deal longer than just a simple text amendment.
Couldn't we make it effective somehow based on when the ordinance lands or something along those lines?
We've got some language on there.
We can get creative. We have...
We'll talk to Bob D. about that.
We could get creative and decide, but...
So we should ask the town... We should ask staff to prepare a text amendment adding short-term rentals as a right in conjunction with action by the board of selectmen, and ask them to make a recommendation to us for that.
So what we do is we probably clearly define what is a short-term rental and make sure that the commission agrees on that definition. And we'll look at, you know, we have at least one example from a zoning regulation standpoint we can refer to.
Yeah, we actually have a draft of what we were thinking for the ordinance, so we can bring that forward.
We can share that with you. We probably will share that first with Bob, just to make sure that we're still in agreement in how we're going to define that use, and then present that to the board.
Was that somewhere where it has to be owner-occupied in the definition? Can you get that in there?
Yeah, in that definition, can we address some of the safety concerns?
Yeah, I was going to say, but that just kind of simplifies it.
That constrains it in a way that I'm not sure we want to.
I don't think we want houses.
The owner-occupied is something we can consider, and we will ask Bob whether it passes the fair housing test.
Right.
That's the biggest comment, is that we don't want to put too much in there that may...
Can you have it by a license? Can you do that with a license?
They can do that with a license.
Ordinance?
Yeah, so I will tell you, again, it's just in draft form, and it's very bare bones, but the ordinance that we started drafting with the intern from the town manager's office does have it as owner-occupied. So that one is just...
Well, and if it's in the ordinance, then, yeah.
Okay.
And we wouldn't make it right for any zone?
Well, that's another...
That would be up to you guys to decide whether or not, because you guys are putting it in the zoning regs as an as-of-right use, so I guess that's a question, only residential zones?
In what zone, right, yeah.
Well, yeah, you wouldn't necessarily want it residential because there could be... There are residences in business zones.
There are.
Which probably makes more sense for it to be in those zones. So I don't know that...
You...
Limited with...
It's just going to be... People are going to be suing us left and right. That's why we need Bob DiCrescenzo's voice in this thing, because he's going to have to defend it.
Well, yeah, absolutely.
And work out the settlements.
And if you didn't hear Mike, he just brought up one of the things for the ordinance, safety. You know, you said owner-occupied.
Yeah, and in defining an S T R., can we also maybe outline some of the safety stuff? Is that an opportunity, too?
So what we can do is, again, it's a very...
Title VII.
Yeah, a very bare-bones ordinance. It's really not well-worked out because we kind of started it, and then we halted it because we weren't sure what direction we were going to go in. But we can bring that in, and what you guys could do is give some recommendations based on what we've outlined so far of what you guys as a zoning commission would like to see the board of selectmen place into that ordinance. And we can do an official memo from you guys to them with those stipulations kind of wrote in there.
Great.
Okay, I think you got... I don't think we need a motion tonight. I think you got our consensus of what we want to do.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we can bring something back to you guys in two weeks if you'd like.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Good idea.
Thanks.
It's time, Mr. Secretary.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Donna thirds it, okay? I have my coat on, and she's over there.